And we're not a hands up, Ms. Lisa Carroll.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, May the 27th. We have approval of minutes from May 20th.
Any issues, anyone? Okay.
It feels we have requests for wave with the noise ordinance on July 26th from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. On Esau Avenue.
No issues.
Okay, May 31st through June the 1st from 2:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. And this is on Charleston Street. June the 7th from 3:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. On Susie Ansley Street. July 10th through the 13th, 10:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. on Kantei Street. August 23rd, 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Cathedral Square. October the 4th from 7:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. On Fifth Street. And August the 23rd from 6:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. in Langin Park.
6:00 a.m. is a little, they're doing a race of some sort out there. So. Yeah, and that's all it is, is setup time. So if we could just let them know that, know extremely loud to where you need a waiver noise until nine o'clock.
Nine. Okay. Public hearing today is a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit for property located at 2411 Venetia Road. Public hearing to amend Article 5, Section 64-5-4C. Point 2 and Section 64-5-4D Neighborhood Meetings of the Unified Development Code. Public hearing. All of these are for the UDC. Public hearing to amend Section 64-3-12 Parking and Loading. 64-8-2 Lot of Records. 64-5-8 Previously Approved Planning Approvals and Plan Unit Developments. Section 64-5-5, 64-5-6, and 5-7. 64-5-8.1 Terminating a previously approved plan unit development. Public hearing to fix costs to diminish structures at 1909 Botero Drive. 1860 Tolman Avenue, 1105 Stewart Road. 1105 Sutton Avenue, 809 South Washington Avenue. And 5910 West Haven Drive South. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. William or Belinda Perryman Parking Norris Littering Fights and Shootings in Mobile.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis and Mr. Carroll.
Yeah, I just have a concern with respect to the way this one was submitted. William or Belinda Perryman. You know, I think our rules require that. You can't say, or this person, or that person, because it could be, you know, what this could lead to is. We having, are having applications for presentations. You know, one through 300 people. So I, I'm not opposed to this one going through.
We addressed it earlier.
Oh, you did?
We addressed it.
Mr. Carroll.
Mr. President, we can amend that and say William and Belinda Perryman who live at the same address. This is the address that's behind 1608 that we've been talking about now for several years where. There's been parking and she's been trapped in a yard. There's been stuff at night, lot of litter coming from around the corner where she's been, where there's several. Service request orders for their address. And I think that they've kind of had their fill and they're looking for some help. I think that we've constantly sent someone out to respond to the issue, but it's, it's an ongoing thing there with. The businesses and her being right there at that corner behind the businesses. So if we could just ask the police department or someone to respond to what we've done and what we will continue to do. To help her alleviate and have the best quality of life, alleviate the issue and have the best quality of life that she can right there. Knowing what's going on in that. St. Stevens Road, you know, there's a, there's an active. There's an active nightclub there that has a lot of traffic, lot of parking, lot of everything that happens right there. That will, you know, cause an unintended consequence. I don't think Deona means to do it, but it continues to happen to her and she's been begging for some help now for. Two or three years and we've responded to her requests several times, but it's, it's an ongoing issue and she's asking for additional help. So if y'all could just speak to that.
Jalous Dozer, Dozier opposed to trash, local trash ordinance because local jails are for criminals, not city upkeep.
Mr. President.
Mr. Woods.
I'll, I'll address this when it comes time on. I think there's a misunderstanding. We took away the jail time. With ordinance change, so I'll, I'll address that.
Resolutions held over 08725 approved purchase order to Styris Ford. 08726 approved purchase order to Styris Ford. 08728 is also purchase order to Styris Ford. 08729 approved purchase order to Stan Summ Equipment Company for rear load garbage truck. 08731 is also for purchase order to Stan Summ Equipment for two cubic yard rear load garbage trucks. 08733 approved purchase order to Cat Head Media for Bullet Exhibit Media Research and Editing Services for Maritime Museum. 08734 approved purchase order to Groundworks Distribution for two autonomous moors for Parks Department. 08736 approved purchase order to Interface Americas for floor replacement. 08738 approved purchase order to Stan Some Equipment Company for two side load garbage trucks. 08741 approved purchase orders to Styris Ford for Super Crew Pickup Trucks. 21745 authorized contract reviews. Companies for Langin Lake dredging and Langin Park Stormwater improvements. 47746 and 747 are considering vacation of right of way for property located on the corner of Dolphin and Sage Avenue and for. A vacation fee at the same location.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Pan.
Yes, 47746 I'm asking my colleagues and 47747. This is a unique situation. This particular land was given to the city of Mobile. And I don't think that we should charge them to give it back. So I'm asking my colleagues on 47746 to vote yes. And then on 47747 to vote no, to not charge someone that gave us land back. So if you. I believe Paul, that's the best way to do it in this particular situation.
This was a right of way that was created for service road.
On a 2007 PUD that the Graff family did, it was for internal traffic flow only. It has never been used. That PUD has no longer in existence. There's another development plan for this corner. And it even, this right of way does not even connect to any public right of way.
Get a question, council. All right. Thank you. All right, Mona Clerk.
Ordinance is being introduced 50021. I'm in ordinance 50005 with the addition of Section 14.
Mr. President.
Mr. Romans.
I would hope Mr. Collins come and just explain to us what this is.
This is the TID ordinance that was passed a couple of months ago. There's no change to the ordinance itself. This is, there is the addition of Section 14. The TID ordinance requires that the rates set where there was a 1%, 1 and 1/2%, 2% progressively in the lodging. Fee that would fund the TID. The district plan itself references the percentages. The ordinance does not. This simply includes the district plan as part of the ordinance so that those rates will be codified in the ordinance itself. There is no other change. To the ordinance, there's no change to the rates, there's no change to the language. It simply makes the rates enforceable through the inclusion of the district plan. In the TID ordinance itself. We would respectfully request, and this is a privilege of the council. If you would consider suspending the rules for this item, there's a reason for that. The current TID rates expire on May 31st. We want to make sure that we get these enacted. Everything is set up behind the scenes in our financial system and financial software, so everything is ready to go. There will just simply be the absence of these rates when the TID ordinance was passed.
Is everybody good with that?
Thank you very much.
640002 Consider A Conditional Use Permit For Property Located at 2411 Venetia Road. 64023 through 028 are the amendments to the UDC. Consent resolutions being introduced 03748 reappoint Matt Oral, Orrell, and Eddie Burrow to the Golf Course Advisory Committee. 4749 through 754. Are the demolitions of structures. 6755 Approve Award A Special Bonus To Administrative Services Employee Of The Month. 6756757 Are Determining Appropriations To Honey Consulting And Stuart Memorial CME Church Serve For Public Purpose And Approve Payments. CIP resolutions being introduced 09758 Transfer Funds From Capital Project Motor Shed Wall To Capital Project Crime Prevention Roof Replacement. 09759 Transfer Funds From Capital Project Motor Shed Wall To Capital Project Crime Prevention Roof Replacement $30,000. Resolutions being introduced.
Hey, before we get to those, are y'all okay with waiving the rules on those, those two?
Yeah.
On the CIP?
Resolutions being introduced 01760 Authorized Agreement With Para Technico Fireworks For Independent State Fireworks Display $45,000. 01761 Intergovernmental Agreement With Solid Waste Disposal Authority Of Baldwin County Alabama For Environmental Enforcement And Management.
Mr. President.
Mr. Romans.
Somebody help me understand what this one is, what this is all about.
Morning. So this is an intergovernmental agreement for recycling. We've been past taking it to ECUA. Baldwin County opened up their MRF a few months ago. It's about 40%, 40% reduction in cost for us to take it to our neighbors across the bay versus to Florida. So it's recycled material handling. Everything from our three sites. We take it there. We'll take it there.
That includes glass and.
No glass.
No glass, so still no glass.
That's correct.
01762 Authorized Soul Source Agreement With First Transit For Transit Management Services.
Mr. President. I think you can get on.
Can we just kind of clarity of this is just a 90-day extension of the existing contract that we have with the current provider of the wave system, I guess. And on, just, I guess, over the next 90 days, I mean, I really, really believe that this is something we need to look at. Just for, just for grins and giggles, as far as where we are. If I wanted to come to Government Plaza here and I wanted to ride public transportation. I'd have to walk half a mile to get to my bus stop. Then I'd have to wait an hour, more or less, because currently, right now, the, the system that we have is, is on an hour loop on a main line. Then I'd have to get off at the, at the mall and possibly wait for that. And then I'd catch another bus and get down here. So an hour and 45 minutes later, I end up at Government Plaza from my home in West Mobile. And several, I looked up several addresses of council members. Just to see how long it would take my colleagues to get down here as well. And, you know, it ranged from an hour 45 to an hour 15. I just think that we have an inefficient public transportation system. You know, looking at, looking at it, how can Mobile be the best place to live, work, and play? Whenever I gotta wait two hours to catch a bus to my job or wherever I go and, you know, let's just say I work an eight-hour shift and I'm spending four of my. Four, literally half of my workday trying to, trying to, I guess, hail a cab or hail a bus to get to my, my, my job. So I just really think that while we have this extension, I think that we need to look at some options. And as far as I'm concerned, I think we, we need to do a better job because again, we, we can't be the best place to live, work, and play. When it takes us two hours to get to a single destination affordably. So thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I have some concerns with this extension. We have seen so much has been taking place over this past weekend. Recently, during this time before this tension, we have seen workers come down here complain. Now we're seeing things that take place through the news media. I'm not sure what's going on with the management with this, with the wave. But I believe that something need to take place. And we, to give this extension, we need to figure out, we need to put some. Something in place. And we need to have some conversation before we move on because there's some problems. It has to be. And, and we need to figure this out. Thank you, Mr. President.
A couple of things. First, I suggest that we go ahead and pass the 90-day extension. And that we arrange at an early date to have a meeting of the Public Services Committee. Where the council can be fully briefed on all the issues related to the wave transit and what's going on. I mean, the fact of the matter is, I don't think we really don't have much of a choice right now because we don't have someone to come in. To take over the wave. But, but we need to look at all the options. That are available to us. Do we retain these folks? Do we bring in new folks? Do we change the way that public transportation is provided? Within the city of Mobile, but I think the council needs to do some fact gathering. Within the next 90 days so that when the end of the 90-day period comes, we're ready to take some action. But the main point, as far as I'm concerned, is. The city of Mobile needs to decide how much it's going to spend on public transportation. And, and then we need to stick to that budget and provide the best public transportation system we can provide within that budget. But, but we can't, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be exceeding that budget. If, if, if during the year it appears that, that, that unchecked, we are going to exceed that budget. Then one of two things needs to happen. Either the administration needs to come back to the council and say, we need more money or. Cost-cutting procedures need to be put in place so as to make sure we hit the budget. But the city of Mobile. The administration, the city council needs to decide how much it's going to spend on public transportation every year. And then we need to stick to that budget because if we don't do that. If we don't do that, if we allow it just to kind of unfold the way it's going to unfold, we're going to end up. That's not a way to run a business. You, you need to know how much you're going to spend on each item and this is a big item. This is a big item. And I think, I just think that we need to look at, look at it all very carefully and then determine how much we're going to spend on public transportation and try to. Provide the most efficient method of public transportation we can provide to the citizens within that budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is this extension request being asked so that the administration can look at the contract, its structure? How it's going to be managed? Who's going to have the oversight? With all the questions we asked during the, the blue flu, I guess, or the bus flu?
Yes, sir. The staff and I have had a couple of meetings with via transportation, with the chamber. With the Mogo program. We've also talked about the, obviously, the needs and concerns we have with wave transit. You may recall that council members Gregory and Woods have been a part of those conversations and been involved in a couple of those meetings. The extension of the 90 days simply gets us through a negotiation period. The current contract expires June 30. The plan is to have something to the council between June 30 and September. So that you'll have a viable plan that would include standard transit, standardized routes, and then. Short-term and smaller vehicle routes as well. So the 90-day extension is the tool that gets us to that, to that end.
Does it allow you guys also set a budget during that 90 days?
Yes, sir.
All right. And what about routes? Does it allow you to add or to add or subtract routes? Is that part of the discussion?
The discussions have been to reduce the fixed routes and have standardized corridors with fewer fixed routes and then increase the, the smaller vehicle on-demand service.
Okay, all of that's great. I'm just going from memory right now. When Gina and I first came onto the council, this was a huge issue. I don't think the transit system, under whatever management we've ever had, has ever run without a deficit. And I'm not talking about a small deficit, I'm talking about a huge deficit. And that was determined by ridership and federal calculations and all those things on how much money we actually got here. To Josh's response, the routes out in his neighborhoods were actually cut by your predecessor. Well, excuse me, not your predecessor, but predecessor, before your predecessors. Which took those routes from out of the city, which then left that area, you know, shorthanded, being the fact that everybody out there had cars and didn't ride the buses. So I think that I'm kind of somewhat in agreement with Joe, but I think that based on what you guys have been doing, what I've been hearing in the general public, is that you're trying to answer those questions in this 90-day period.
So, so we've already had about three months' worth of meetings, so we've progressed along in that. What we, what we discussed is coming back with a standard, here's what the city will be able to pay for transit. Here will be the final budget. Part of the issue with existing budget with TransDev is that it's somewhat unlimited based on the operational cost and what you get for grant funds. What you'll see with a revised contract is it will be a single number not to exceed, so we'll provide services for this amount, no more. There's also a discussion that we would grow the on-demand service and shrink the standardized routes. So that it would be an easier path to get to the fixed routes. If we need to get to the fixed routes, they will be more defined. And the smaller on-demand service would be shuttle services. That would fall within that standard fixed rate so that we wouldn't exceed and we would improve the value of the service to the rider.
And the last question that I guess everybody has at hand is management itself between. The drivers and the management company, is there any way in our contracts that. We can have any oversight to that as far as, I know that it's union, their contracts with the driver and the union, but the. The hardware and infrastructure for the system belong to us and there's a huge contribution coming from us, so. Is there type of, any type of insight or oversight that we can have in the new contract that gives us some type of leverage when things are out of hand? And where we need to step and when we need to step.
We, we think. It depends on the level of involvement that the council wants to have at the time, right? That's kind of a. Either one of those questions provide a challenging answer. Previously, the city ran its own transit system. That's what got it away from running its own transit system to go to the contracted. I think as we sit here today, the single question that relates to contract and labor revolves around federal regulations that allow for unionization of the drivers. One of the things that causes a bit of an issue is that the union contract runs at a separate date from the council city contract as it relates to the transit. So minimally, we would go back and attempt to have something so that all of the dates coincide. So when we're having total contract and total transit discussions, we're having the entire program discussion rather than these alternating dates that are problematic to each other.
And is the, got these negotiations over the next 90 days will align all of those things so that we'll be able to better manage our system?
Yes, sir. And the last thing I'll say is we have talked about reducing the reliance on federal funds. This is not an effort to de-unionize, but it is an effort to, to your point, to allow the city to have better control. Once you get into the federal labor unions and the federal dollars, it does come with some obligations. We're exploring a way that we can reduce that obligation and improve the service.
Does that require us reducing services to other municipalities? And if I remember right, I don't think we're really going to any other municipalities right now.
That's, that's correct.
No, we, I don't think we're going to Bridgette anymore, do we? Really, that, there was a transportation modal hub that we did. Before we left here, was that what, 12, 13, 10, 12?
Because I know, we talked about.
It was 500,000, yeah.
Because none of the municipalities were helping to, to, were tipping in.
That's correct.
We, we were paying for everything and I don't know how many riders were coming from other municipalities, not that many. But, you know, the city of Mobile was paying for everything.
Right. So it's my understanding, all of that has been reduced except for a single fixed route and that route is under examination as well?
I mean, I constantly ride by it when I was at Bridgette. I thought that the only thing they could do out there was just get in the bus. I think that transportation hub out there is closed, is it not? It is closed. Since, yeah, the facility is closed, so.
It's just a single route.
Right. So really, the only place that we're going into now is Bridgette. There's no more Chickasaw, there's no more, there's no more out west, so we're really operating within the city itself.
Correct. And, and all of that's under examination with the city of Mobile being the preferred service.
Right. Are we, and that's because we aren't getting any pro-rata share from everyone else, correct?
It's my understanding, yes, sir.
All right. I'm fine with the 90-day extension, as long as we answer all the questions and I think they'll answer your questions too, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr.
Scott, if you would, some data points I think would be instructive for us, which would be for Huntsville, Montgomery, and Mobile. What do we, what do those municipalities spend on public transportation, including the on-call? And what is their annual operating budget?
Yes, sir. We're working through those now to get that information.
If you get that data to us, that'd be very, very helpful.
There, there was a question about Birmingham. Birmingham is off the table. They, they.
Totally different, totally different system. It's a metro system. It's a totally different system.
But I'd also like to see how they set up their systems from the on-demand to the fixed routes. You know, how much of each are they providing?
When we, when we looked at it, when, when Levon and Fred and I looked at it several years, my recollection is. That neither Huntsville nor Montgomery were providing on-demand.
So it was all fixed routes?
If they were providing on-demand, it was a fraction of what we were spending on it. But, but, you know, it may have changed. It was a long time ago.
We'll certainly gather that for you.
Mr. Pan.
No, I was just gonna join in with what William stated that, that's what basically I want to see. You know, if we can get that information done in these 90 days, just need to have a plan in place. And put, if we can put that in the negotiations during this time, because we just seen a lot right now. And we want to make sure that we are letting them know what we would like to see during this process. So thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President. Thank you for all that you've done, all the work, and I've enjoyed the discussions about, about what, what, you know, the next 90 days would kind of look like. End of the day, to Councilman Dave's point, I mean, it is about, it's about the dollar, but. It, to me, it's also about the efficiency. You know, I see the big buses rolling down the streets and probably got about 5% occupancy on them. So I, I think there's a better way, I think there's efficient way. And I, I think that, that, you know, everything's on the table as far as I'm concerned. With that being said, saying that, you know, hope to have something in July that we can kind of start kind of diving into. In order to set a meeting, maybe middle of July, would that potentially be a good time to kind of start, I guess, initial discussions?
Yes, sir. For us, that gives us plenty of time to, to put that together. The hope would be that we would be able to have something defined by the end of August. The reason that date's important is we have an October 1 fiscal year, so we want to work through that and that will give us another 30 days by the end of August to figure out kind of what that, what that actually looks like.
Okay. And I'll, I'll work with, with the city council, we'll set a date.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President. I'm interested in the, the assets as well. Like how, how many buses do we have and what classes or sizes of buses do we have? And then ridership. I'm, I'm very curious about ridership. Do we currently get ridership numbers from the operator?
Yes, sir, we do. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We can produce those. Yes, sir, we have.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins, do we also own, do we own? Outside the buses, do we own any vehicles that they have as well?
We own all the service vehicles and the service facility. We, the smaller, the Mogo vehicles, we don't own those. That's a separate function, but the smaller vans and the larger buses, we do own.
What about any cars, anything like SUVs that they drive?
I'll have to get you to specific. We've been so focused on transit, I wouldn't.
Can you check, yeah, can you check? Okay, all right.
All right, thank you.
08763 Approved Purchase Order To CDW Government For Annual Subscription For FireWire Software. 08764 Approved Purchase Order To Howard Industries For Annual Subscription For Network Endpoint Management Software. 21765 Authorized Contract With McCouran Williams For Construction Engineering And Inspection Services. The Langin Stormwater Improvement Project $90,000. 6766 and 767 Are Authorizing Settlement Agreement And Release Of Claims. Call For Public Hearings 41768 Call For Public Hearing To Consider Rezoning Property Loc. Call for public hearings forty-one seven sixty-eight call for public hearing to consider rezoning property located at fifty-one oh five, fifty-one oh nine, and fifty-one. Eleven Overlook Road from R one to B two scheduled July first. Forty-one seven sixty-nine call for public hearing to consider the proposed modification of a previously approved planned unit development. For property located sixty-one oh nine Howells Ferry Road scheduled July first. Announcements.
Um before we do announcements, Mr. President, on the resolutions, we've got three that are under fifty thousand. If y'all would like to waive the rules on those. Everybody good? All right.
Seven sixty, seven sixty-three, and seven sixty-four.
Right, yeah.
You know, the comments from the council. Anything from administration. Okay, we'll see each other at ten-thirty.